Yeah, that was, that was good, right? Not that I enjoyed it, but it was very pleasant.
Good evening. Let me call to one of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Texas Southmost College District. We have Board Members present this evening is Ms. Rosemary Breedlove, Mr. David Oliva, Ms. Dolly Zimmerman, Mr. Roberto Robles, Dr. Roberto Robles, pardon me, Mr. Ramon Dinos Parsa, Mr. Eduardo Campirano, we have Dr. Julia Garcia. So we are organized en boc, right, Mr. Oliva?
That's correct.
That means everybody's here. So we're gonna start off with some announcements on, that we have to make.
It is with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, that I would like to invite Mr. Kevin Alfred, the incoming President of the Chamber of Commerce of Brownsville, to make a presentation to the Board.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, Mr. Chairman and Trustees. On behalf of the Board Directors of the Brownsville Chamber of Commerce, we would like to present, and the Brownsville Shines Committee, we would like to present this plaque. It's basically a beification award that we would like to present for the Education and Business Complex. The architecture and the landscaping of this building, it's just representative of what we love to see, what we love to see, and we understand there's a lot more to come. And that's very exciting. So, thank you, and congratulations for the, just what an excellent job this University Boulevard is turning out to look like, so thank you.
I'm here for a thank you, Vincent Alfred, for this wonderful recognition, this picture of our outstanding campus, and I know that without saying, this is the most people campus in the world today.
In our world.
So y'all can look at that, and thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Back to back. Mr., we had a wonderful visit this week, the Chairman of our Board did, with Mr. Alfred, who is the incoming President of the Chamber, with the current Chamber President, and with their CEO, and shared with them some of the plans that we have over the next four to five years, and we're mutually excited about, about the work that we can do together. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Kevin.
Very much for being here. The second announcement, I'd like to introduce somebody else to make, and that's Vince Solis, our Assistant Vice President for Student Affairs, to introduce our new chess coach.
Good evening, Board Trustees, Madam President, Provost. Today's with great pleasure I introduce Mr. Gilberto Hernandez, who is our new chess coach. Mr. Hernandez was born in Ebonos, on Luispotozzi, Mexico. He began playing chess at age five. When Mr. Hernandez was 14-years-old, he attained the prestigious title of National Master in Mexico. At age 16, Mr. Hernandez became a FIDE master, which is the International Federation for Chess. Gilberto, when he reached 19, earned the title of International Master, and in 1995, Mr. Hernandez was awarded the prestigious title of International Grandmaster, which is the highest title attainable in the chess community, held by fewer than less than 1,000 people in the world. Mr. Hernandez has won the Mexican Championship three times before moving to Europe in Argentina, where he spent the last nine years. He has been the highest-rated player from Mexico since 1982 until the present. Grandmaster Hernandez has represented Mexico seven times at Chess Olympiad. He has won over 40 international tournaments, including the most prestigious in Latin America. GM Hernandez has played and helped train some of the top players in the world, including the current number-two player, Grandmaster Anan. He has 15 years coaching experience with players of all levels. He is married to a woman Grandmaster, Mrs. Claudia Amur Argentina, who until recently was the top-rated woman player in all of Latin America. She will be here in a few months. They have, they have four children, ranging in ages from three to eight-years-old, who are currently finishing their school in Argentina, hoping to be with him soon. I present to you Grandmaster Hernandez.
Good evening, Dr. Garcia, and the UTBT TSC Board of Trustees. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of you who were involved in hiring me. I feel very comfortable here, and appreciate the cordiality extending to me by my college and students. I recognize the prestige of the university, and I will do my best to improve the UTBT chess team, and give our best effort to serve the university, the city of Brownsville, and the valley. I look forward to getting to know everyone of you. Thank you.
I wanna know how old he was in 1982, 'cause he only looks about 20 now. Five, right?
What I wanna know, what I wanna know is, is children, do they play chess?
Oh, yeah. Both?
The childrens.
And they're probably as good as any floor you've seen, right?
I gotta come to school here.
It's in the genes.
Who'd tell you about that?
Es un gran placer tenerlo aquí, es un honor muy grande. Gracias por sus palabras. And now I'd like to introduce Dr. Ruth Ann Ragland, for our Vice President for Institutional Advancement, so that she might introduce our new Director for Sports, Information, Marketing and Development, along with Dr. This is a duo.
With Dr. Hilary Silva.
It's a dynamic duo.
We're not changing roles. No, no. Mr. Chairman, Board Members, and Dr. Garcia. Dr. Silva, and I have the pleasure of introducing our first Director of Sports Information, Athletics Development and Marketing, Mr. Ronnie Sumar. Ronnie has been at UTBT TSC for 16 years, first as TSC's Director of Public Information, and then as Director of Publications when the partnership was formed. Athletics competition, of course, is taking on a whole new look here. We've entered the NAI, we're starting soccer next year, and Ronnie brings a wealth of knowledge and experience needed for these big changes. He's a former sports editor at the Brownsville Herald, he's also worked at newspapers in Harlingen and San Antonio, and he's a former Public Information Officer for Brownsville Independent School District, and he's a member of the Rio Grande Valley Sports Hall of Fame Board of Directors, and is a former president. He also is past recipient of Leadership Brownsville's Distinguished Alumni's Award. Ronnie's a graduate of TSC, he's one of our alums, he has an Associate's Degree from TSC, he holds a Bachelor of Journalism from University of Texas at Austin, and he has a Master's Degree in Education from UTBT TSC. He has excellent experience, and he will assist us in our marketing, and in our fundraising, as well as in our sports information. He knows sports inside out. Dr. Silva.
Thank you. You know, we're very fortunate on this campus many times, stars are aligned, and it just makes sense. This is one of those opportunities. When Ruth Ann and I talked about the needs that we had, one in hurry and development, and one we had in athletics, Ronnie just surfaced, it just made a lot of sense. You know Ronnie on this campus, and you know Ronnie's love for athletics. He's been involved in athletics program, has been a strong supporter of athletics already. He's been the one that has called our games, he's traveled with us to the tournaments when we go to state tournaments, so, you know, he just seems to be a natural appointment. We are very fortunate to have someone of Ronnie's talent and love for the sport to work with Dan Huntley and the rest of our athletic department, and I give you Ronnie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Garcia, members of the Board. I've worked with all of you for so long, and talking about the days at TSC, I was here with David and Dolly and Eddie, back in the good old days, so, I've got a lot of friends here, my doctor's here, my president, everyone else. He just gave me a, he just gave me a 10,000-mile check a couple of weeks ago. But yes, I've been involved with athletics for a long, long time, and a lot of you know that, and I look forward to giving you greater visibility to our athletic department. I know a lot of you are going on a trip this weekend, but I have put flyers in your note packets. We have our first volleyball home match this weekend, right at the Gavels Gym, inviting everyone, the Board, the Dr. Garcia administration, everyone here. At 2:00 on Saturdays, our first-ever NAI competition at home, and we'll be playing Wiley College. And so I'll be real busy that day, and busy with all the athletics like I've been for many years, and I really enjoy looking forward to the opportunity, there's a lot of growth coming up athletics for the years to come, and I'm looking excited to be part of that. So I thank you once again.
Thank you.
A lot of you don't know, but Ronnie started as sports editor of the Brownsville Herald when he was a senior in high school. That had to be heard of. That was his assistant.
You wrote all the articles.
That was also managing the role of being involved with a screaming eagle, as well as the sports person there, and I think, I think he started in kindergarten, 'cause I remember him reporting. Some of you may not remember, but the St. Francis Academy that was over here where the Boys Club is now, that was a parochial school for Kinder First and Second, and Ronnie was the sports editor there at the time. But, I think that's a great thing for our university. He knows the campus, he knows the community, you know, Ronnie's involvement with the Valley Hall of, the Sports, South Texas Hall of Fame and all that, I mean, that's, that ought to help us a lot. And you forgot recruitment. That'll be important as well, so.
Congratulations, Ronnie.
Congratulations.
The Board will now convene in Executive Session in accordance to 551 of Government Code. The Board will now convene in Regular Session after having been in Executive Session. I'm sorry for the delay. We will go to Article Number Two on the Agenda, and we have some real estate matters to handle. Before we do that, every year, this Board evaluates the performance of our UTBT TSC President, Dr. Julia Garcia. And Dr. Garcia, as always, has been very busy throughout the year, with many accomplishments to, to, to deal with, and with much work on her part to allow this university to grow in the, in the direction that this Board has asked her to maintain that growth. The performance of Dr. Garcia has been excellent this year, and as usual, she gets the best performance that this Board can give her with an A++. And as the partnership, as our partnership with UTB, as it's reached its 15th year, Dr. Garcia and the university has been in a high-growth mode in many areas, to include student enrollment, recruitment of new faculty, increased emphasis on research, and in addition to that, Dr. Garcia's leadership has been engaged and focused on improvement retention and graduation rates. Her initiatives and goals, therefore, are centered in these key areas, and are aligned with the priorities of the college and UT system. So, we believe that her work, and along with her performance, and her staff, and VPs and Presidents, and Deans, excuse me, have all collaborated with, through her leadership, to bring the excellent performance that this Board has received throughout the year. And I congratulate Dr. Garcia for, for just always being on go, and always trying to strive to, to put everything together with the limited funding that we have on our campus, but yet always has been able to meet the goals that she has set herself for the mission of this institution. This year, in addition to the excellent work that she has done, she has been very busy doing other things also. She has been receiving many honors, and among some of the additions to her resume this year, those have been that she is now a member of the Board Directors of the National Audubon Society. She was invited to present the keynote speaker, the keynote presentation at a national conference on Women in Leadership sponsored by the Kennedy School of, at Harvard University. She has been named the Top 20 Elite Hispanic Women by Hispanic Business Magazine. She has been featured in a scholarly article to be published in the Harvard Educational Review on Women University Presidents. We were very honored when she informed us that this past May she was to receive an honorary Doctorate from Brown University in Providence, Rhode Island, and she gave the Baccalaureate Commencement Speech, I believe. And she's received many, many, many accolades that are wonderful, that make me proud to say that she is, you know, our President, and I, again, I thank you, Dr. Garcia, for your leadership. Thank you for your sustained leadership, as a term, as you will know what that means later. And, and so I do believe that your performance has been excellent and wonderful, and we're so, so proud of you, and so, so grateful for your, for your leadership. There's another accolade that she received recently, and I'm gonna allow Ms. Breedlove to just tell us about that, 'cause I wasn't there, she was, and so if she would please give us a little narrative report on that.
Yes, briefly. I'd like you to know, as most of you do, that Dr. Garcia continues to be recognized by many prestigious organizations throughout the nation. One of the most recent is an award from the Hispanic Heritage Foundation for her accomplishments in education. Only six awards were given this year, including awards to Jose Feliciano and Antonio Vanderes. I was proud to be in attendance, and I want you to know that Antonio Vanderes was absolutely darling.
Now that we got that aside. Now the way.
Dr. Garcia's involvement in national boards, Dr. Garcia's involvement in national boards, and her recognition by other organizations are not only recognition of her work, but of our faculty, of our staff, students, and of this community, university. The context was these organizations and national personalities give our university greater prestige, national exposure, and added opportunities. So please tune in October 8th, at, it's a Sunday, at 11:00 AM on NBC, you can watch the whole award ceremony of the Hispanic Heritage Awards 20, 20th anniversary celebration, this was their 20th year. And Telemundo is going to run it on October 1st, and we're not sure what time, but I know that, I know Letty will get that advertised for you all, so you know when this is coming. But it was a great opportunity, and we were all proud of Dr. Garcia. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board, Dr. Garcia, just un abrazo, and thank you for all the work you've done for us.
Muchísimas gracias. I can only say that, who am I to disagree with Rosemary Breedlove's assessment of our, of our company there, but.
I thought it was Antonio Vanderes.
But I will tell you that we had some wonderful encounters during those couple of days with other folks, and one in particular that I'll recount for you, and that was with a lady who came up to me, and she said, "You know, I heard your name, and I thought, you looked familiar, and then I started reading about your work, and, and I realized you were from Texas Southmost College." Now, we are in Washington DC at the Kennedy Center, right? And so, she's a beautiful, beautiful lady, and I said, "Yes," and she said, "Well, I'm a graduate of Texas Southmost College, and my daughter, I would like, my daughter wants to meet you." Well, her daughter is the young lady who appeared in Spanglish as the young daughter that was, you know, between the two worlds, and she says, "And my husband's here too, and he used to teach at Pace." And, and so they come to Brownsville often, and I think her name is Stephanie, and I don't remember, I'm sorry, the last name right now, but I'll find out. And, and so I said, "Well, then you must come to our campus, and, and let us all get to meet you and know you." But she was here in 19, the mother was, in 1985, and, to 1987, is what she told me. But it's a small world, it's a very, very small world, when you imagine the connects that people make. We made wonderful connects with lots of sponsors that evening, and, and plan to take full advantage of those. We talked a lot about the university off-camera, and, and people now know, if they didn't already, that we're here, and that, and that we're in an important place, and that we're doing important work. And so, the only words that I was able to say that night, I know you must not be able to imagine me speechless, but you will see it on television. And I was taken, and, but thank goodness, we had worked on some words earlier, and there was a monitor, and so I, but, but in essence, it was, it was a, I've never felt it was a personal accolade, you must know that. It was one, as you described, for all the work that we have done. And so, I accept it on behalf of the entire Valle del Río Grande, and I thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Garcia. Okay, we have some real estate issues to deal with, and we have a contract and resolution for the purchase of the east 18.5 feet of Lot 5, and the west 20 feet of Lot 6, in Block 16 of Colonial Alta Vista here in Brownsville. I need to ask for a motion to approve the contract and the resolution for the same.
Please move.
Motion's been made by Ms. Zimmerman, by Ms. Breedlove, excuse me.
Second.
Second by Dolly Zimmerman. Any further discussion on this item?
Just, it's a purchase of a lot for, or two pieces for $40,800, and I think the more important thing is that with this strategic acquisition, we'll be able to move on actually creating additional parking on Jackson, so that's a plus, too.
In light of the construction that's coming, right?
That's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to Item Number Three, is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of August the 17th, and the public hearing on August 28th and August 31st. I ask for a motion to approve.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made by Mr. Campirano, and second by Ms. Oliva. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. Item Four, speakers to Agenda, Mayor, do you have any speakers? No? None? Okay, then we move on to Item Number Five, the Board Briefing on Certification Success in Education and Health Sciences. Dr. Chip Dameron will address the Board. Chip, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, President Garcia, members of the Board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk with you tonight about the, to give you an update on the success of some of our academic programs. As all of you know, we take very seriously our commitment to provide a quality education for all of our students, and that's especially true for our students who are going into professional fields. Every year, our graduates in education, nursing, and in many of the allied health fields must take professional certification exams to demonstrate their competence in their fields. Tonight, we will give you an update of the continuing success we are having in the School of Education and the School of Health Sciences. I would like to ask Dr. Carl Stockton, Dean of the School of Education, and Dr. Eldon Nelson, Dean of the School of Health Sciences, to come forward and provide you with summary information on the success of their programs.
Thank you, Dr. Dameron. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, President Garcia, tonight we bring to you very good news about our students and their success over the past few years. I'd like to start out by talking about the successes in the School of Education, and then Dr. Nelson will continue and talk about the successes in the School of Health Sciences. First of all, I'd like to just mention that the students that go through teacher education have to be certified by the State Board of Educator Certification, and this is a state certification of all the teachers that are certified that go through our program. I'm pleased to announce that this year, we've seen our highest passing rate ever of 97% of all the students that have gone through the School of Education and this institution, and this is, we're very, very excited, very proud of the accomplishment of these, these students. And what, what's more amazing than that is, if you notice, the next bullet, 50% of the students that come to this campus before they enter the School of Education take at least one developmental ed class, and so, to take the students from that point to where they're passing that state certification exam, at 97%, is a tribute not only to the faculty, but the faculty on this campus from all the different colleges and schools, and the commitment that the students have, the perseverance that they have. So we're very, very excited about that. To share with you, I'm just giving you kind of a brief trend of the, of the passing rates over the, the past several years, and in 1999 to 2000, the passing rate was at 78%. Then, of course, we did some curriculum realignment with the state, we got the passing rate up to 90%, but then if you notice, there's a steady progression of increasing 90%, 94%, 95%, and 97%. And that's attributed not just to the curriculum alignment, but it's a classic example where the faculty are doing research, they're taking that knowledge from the research, and they're implementing it back in the classroom, so that our students can benefit, and, yes, yes ma'am.
Is this the first time they take the test? Is the first, the first test, the time you take the test?
Yes, yes, it's the cohort, it's, it's co-horted year by year, okay? So it's, every year, we have to identify a cohort of students for that year, and that then when they take the test, it's counted in, in this passing rate, okay? So, so I attribute that now, not only for the hard work of the students, but the faculty are conducting research, and they're taking that research, and they're putting it back in the classroom. It's, it's, you know, to go from 90 to 97%, you just don't do that just with curriculum alignment. So, that's a, that's a classic example where research interplays back into, for the benefit of our students. The other, the things that I also want to share with you are those programs that had 100% passing rate on their Texas exam. And if you notice, it's art, music, kinesiology, school counselor, ESL journalist, educational diagnostician, which is in special education, English Language Arts and Reading, Special Education, History, Social Studies, Mathematics, Reading, Spanish, and then the last one, Licensed Professional Counselor. After our students get certified as a counselor, they also take what they call an LPC certification, and that program, they also passed at 100% passing rates, and that's a very, very tough professional license. One of the, this, this chart here, I wanted to share with you that our undergraduate program, EC4 Bilingual, is our largest undergraduate program. It is basically the elementary teachers that get certified in bilingual education, and I noticed this impressive increase. In '03, '04, we were at 82%, this year, we're at 99%, and our students are being recruited from, trying to be recruited from all over the country for bilingual teachers, and they choose to stay here in the valley, so that's a tribute to, to, to the students. So that's a tribute to the students. The next couple of slides I want to share with you that talks about the growth in the number of graduates, both at the undergraduate and graduate. If you notice, from '01, '02 to current, we have grown at the undergraduate at 104%. And so this past year, 261 students at the undergraduate became certified teachers. And at the graduate level, this past year, we had the highest of 139. And the next slide is showing an example of headcount of students sitting in education classes. Now, let me preface this by saying that's also those students that are English majors, math majors, science majors, that are taking education classes for certification, okay? So it really reflects many of those other programs. And I've charted this, we've charted this over the last few years just to show the growth. And the reason why I'm showing the growth is because, to make this simple statement, we are growing with quality. And that's a very, very important concept in terms of accountability. And so that's why we're producing more students, and they're passing the certification at the highest rate ever. And, of course, the reason for success, obviously, faculty mentoring of students is very important. We build on the strengths of the faculty, both in teaching and in research. We build on each other's strength. The commitment of both the students and the campus community. And we have hired more faculty over the last few years that work with our students. The last thing that I want to share with you before I introduce Dr. Nelson is this. This recently, the teacher, the first-year teacher that graduates and goes work for the school districts, our starting salaries are $37,500. That is two to, that's actually three times the per capita income in Cameron and Willacy County. We are making a difference in terms of the people in this community for participation and success. And so we're very proud that we're producing more teachers. We want to keep growing, and we're proud with the quality. And the school districts are hiring our students. They can't hire them fast enough. So thank you very much for allowing me to make the presentation. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Nelson for the School of Health Sciences, then I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
President Garcia, members of the board, thank you for inviting me to share some good news about the School of Health Sciences. I'd like to indicate to you that two of our four nursing programs require national certification, the vocational nurse and the associate degree nursing program. Five, all five of our allied health programs have professional certification, but they are not necessarily required for employment. In fact, in the, in Texas, the ADN and VN, EMT, RADTEC, and respiratory therapy require certification for employment. The others do not. Example here is that for graduation and for employment in the state of Texas, the ADN has to have licensure through the NCLEX RN examination. The VN, again, certification is required, licensure is required. They must take a national NCLEX examination for licenses vocational nursing. I'll share that with you. The BSN program that we have does not require certification. And the reason is, is because all of the students that we have entering to the BSN program already have their RN. They have already been licensed as RNs. And the MSN program the same way. All of our applicants and students in the MSN program already have the licensure. Looking at, again, good news here, our ADN pass rates for the NCLEX examination over the past several years, we have done very, very well. If you will reflect with me, the last year, the 2006 rate actually represents only three-fourths of a year. We will have more students taking that exam. And we would anticipate that they would do the audible thing and bring us up into the 90s there, as is typical of the past. The national examination, the NCLEX PN, interestingly enough, most of the communities and states refer to their vocational nurses as practical nurses. So this is the same examination that our nurses, vocational nurses, take. And though the scale is a bit different, it's actually between 80 and 100, so it magnifies differences. As you can see there, they've done very, very well over the last several years. And we're real proud of them and the performances that they've had here. We performed very well against other institutions in the state. We perform on the ADN examination, on the RN examination. We, of course, have compared with the graduates of four-year institutions like UT Houston, UT San Antonio, Texas Tech, and we do very well in comparison with their performance Interesting enough, for allied health professionals, the, to be able to be employed in the state of Texas, you have to have and pass successfully the national examination for EMT, radiology, technology, and respiratory therapy. That's not the case for DMS, for Diagnostic Medical Sonographer. You can, you can graduate from our program and go to a hospital, and they can hire you without having taken the certification exam. The same is true for our medical lab technology. They will be hired without the need for certification exams. Now, this is a problem for us. Yes, please.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Are they, is someone trying to make this certification too mandatory? Or is that?
Yes, the state is moving in that direction, but it's not there yet. Now, we, as an institution, are sort of measured by the graduates that we have that become certified. So we've been working with the hospitals in our area and asking them if they could try to, in some fashion, either require certification for employment or to offer some incentive for certification. And they've been very good at that. And over the last year, we've had some success in that field.
So what do you think the timeframe is before that's mandatory? Is there?
Oh, no, it's several years. It's not even on the legislative board yet.
All right, thank you.
Yes, certainly. And looking at those three programs that do require certification, licensure for employment, as you can see here, that has great meaning. And, of course, the students do very well. We have an EMT, our paramedic program, radiology, technology, respiratory therapy. All of the students that take the examination become licensed or certified or registered in that area. Now, this may involve that they take the examination several times over a period of time, but they, they stay with it because their employment is dependent upon.
Are they limited as to the number of times they can take the test?
It varies depending upon the particular, I think the EMT, it's, you can take it twice, and if you're not successful, you can be retrained in a certain area and then take it two more times. This is what we feel is a perspective on the success and the growth of our programs in the School of Health Sciences. And I'd like to direct your attention, if I may, to the lowest line on there, which really describes our nursing program and enrollment over the period of time. If you see, we have increased a little bit, in fact, that's fairly substantial in reality, up to about 2004. And then 2004, we've taken off. And in fact, that major, major increase that you see there is really due to the fact that we've had significant assistance by the hospitals and clinical training sites in our area. They've provided us with clinical faculty, in some instances, paying for them, for us. Without those clinical faculty, we really could not have been able to meet the 1 to 10 ratio in the clinical environment to be able to train the, our nurses. So we've done very well. There's actually about a 225% increase between 2001 and 2006. So that's good. Now, what I might mention to you is that this line of projection that we are proposing for the next five or so years is purely based on our assumptions that, whereas we may not be able to grow the ADN and the vocational nursing program as much, we are planning on developing the BSN and the MSN programs. So we've got high expectations for those two programs, and the hospitals are helping us. They have instituted just in the last year or so a growth promotion program for advancement in education. So we're working with the hospitals while there. And the next line, the allied health, if you'll see, we've had marked growth in the first few years here, and then it continues. But that marked growth really is the effect of instituting two major programs in the School of Health Sciences. One is the core curriculum program in which any students in the university can take health-related courses. There are three primarily that they can take. And indeed, we've had a great, and all of those three are prerequisites for most of the other courses in nursing and in our allied health programs. And then the BAT program. The BAT program was initiated in that timeframe, and we're excited about the impact and the future that the BAT has on encouraging enrollment. It's an entirely online program, so we're not limited by the number of applicants that are here within our immediate community. It's really going to be a statewide, if not nationwide, program. We're just moving that program on to the UT telecampus.
And what, what?
I'm sorry?
What courses are available through BAT?
Well, for the most part, there's the advanced courses and the general education courses that are required to be able to move from an associate degree in a technical program to a baccalaureate degree in a technical program. And so we have pharmacology, we have advanced respiratory therapy, we have advanced courses that are available for them as well during that time period.
And all that is online?
All of it's online, 100%. Yes?
You know, between years 2001 or '02 and 2005?
Yes.
The nursing projections have been almost constant. And then you see the increase for the year 2006.
Yes.
With the demand in the industry for nurses?
Yes.
Why has there been a constant line on the students that are?
It's really, it's really deceiving here. There actually was an increase during that time period. What happened right here is we took an intermediate class. There were actually three classes that were going to school at the same time. We tried to recover about 30 students that indeed were not successful in that first or second year. So we re-entered them to the program. So it's a little deceiving here, but there was a fairly significant increase in the base number that we have even there. But it was a, it was an aberration.
The hospitals are having to, you know, hire Filipino nurses because of the shortage that?
Yes.
The industry now has, and they keep on asking, well, do we have a projection as to an increase in the nursing graduates, students and nurses?
It's in a function of our capacity as well.
Yes. Right now, we are, we are limited in facilities and in faculty. And that's typical throughout the state of Texas and throughout the nation.
Part of the reason is that they get higher pay actually working in a hospital than teaching, the faculty, so that's why they get, there's a drain from the university.
But it's an issue of funding. We don't have the slots, right?
And that's part of what I think Dr. Robes' point is, that sometimes a nurse can make more money actually working in the hospital than teaching in an academic institution. So to recruit nursing faculty also requires funds that we have not had available. I might interrupt for just one moment?
Yes, please.
Dean Nelson, and mention that for the first time, UT Pan Am and UT Brownsville are going to submit a joint request to the legislature. And we're going to submit two, actually, but one of them is so that we can double the number of nurses that we are producing. And so we will need all of your help in making that request, because in order to do that, we're going to need additional funds for faculty and additional funds for space as well, and everything else that goes with it. So I think we'll have, it, the state has identified the nursing shortage to be statewide, as you know. So it's something that we believe might have some appeal, and particularly because we're going at it with the strength of the entire valley.
And to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, the, actually, they can't get enough Filipino nurses to, to the hospitals and to fill all the positions in the hospitals throughout the country. And that even includes those, the Canadian nurses. And I know that Dr. Nelson has been looking at doing some type of program with Mexico and the universities there and doing some kind of exchange program to?
That's exactly right.
Something that would be more relevant to the valley, you know, that type of student.
In addition, though, Dr. Robes, we might mention that if we just had more capacity, there are students here that are pre-qualified and ready for our nursing program?
That's correct.
That we turn down every year?
That's right.
Not because they're not smart enough, not because they haven't taken all of the requisite science courses, but because we simply don't have enough faculty.
Absolutely, over 100 nurses.
So we have, we have talent here simply waiting for the opportunity to get into our nursing program.
Yeah, it is, I hear it all the time. It's extremely frustrating for those who have sons and daughters that want to go into the nursing field.
The number one call.
It's very competitive, but we, hopefully, we can turn that around.
Well, thank you, Dr. Robes. We do have almost 400 applicants, and we can only take in 72 to a little bit more than that each year. So we do have the, we do have the reserve. Yes, please.
We went through this again, I mean, we went through this in the '70s. We brought in all these nurses. It was the same thing, you know, it was, and it seems to be greater now because we have a greater population. And, you know, we learned some things then. We all went to the hospitals and asked for them to provide funding for additional faculty because we couldn't afford them. And you all, you've worked with the consortium?
Yes.
And we've added even more faculty members, which helps. But another thing, we still, there's still more places we can go out because we actually need practice area for the, we don't have enough practice area. If we have those 200 students, there's not enough places. So we still need to go to the county agencies and use them. We've brought this up before, there's lots of places that have qualified nurses that are out there working now. We need to go to some of those places. And I've mentioned those before, and we haven't used all those. We need to use those, those are qualified nurses working in the profession they love and know their stuff very well, are certified. We need to use them and build up that capacity.
One of the limitations that we have, if I can address that, is that in order for a nurse to be an acceptable instructor or teacher or clinical preceptor, they must have a baccaloyte or a master's degree. That's very limiting in many instances for some of the sites that we would like to train. They just simply don't have the nurses at that level.
But there are a lot to do.
Yes.
All the county agencies do, and they see lots, lots and lots of patients and great opportunities.
We're going to be looking at many opportunities, including joint appointments?
Yes.
With the medical schools that we think we can leverage some UT dollars with?
We need to be real creative.
For recruiting new faculty. Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I'll just finish here by summarizing the impact of the growth of our allied health and nursing programs by directing your attention to the chart here. If you look at year 2010, that represents what the estimated number of students that we would have to have, it's about 1,400 students in the School of Health Sciences, to do our part to having the university reach its 20,000 enrollment level. In reality, we feel by our projections that we would do at least that and perhaps as many as 1,500. So we think we can, we can assist the university at reaching its goal. Quickly, the success, of course, is very similar to that, that Dean Stockton had shared with you. The only difference is that we have is that we are so dependent on our clinical communities. And in item three, I tried to indicate how important that was for us. And in item four, I indicated that indeed, it's not only our teaching faculty, but it's those clinical faculty that are extraordinarily important for us to be able to continue this level of success. And in behalf, then, of Dean Stockton and myself, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, Dean Nelson.
Thank you very much. Now, we move into the 2007 capital budget allocation for maintenance, tax notes, refinanced bonds, and bond projects. Dr. Weimar?
I should have stayed for this one. We're beginning to move into some exciting times at the college. The bond program is beginning to move forward, and we look forward to making it a success along with some other activities that are ongoing on campus. What we'd like to do this evening is take a look at three areas of funding that we need direction from the board on. First, the maintenance notes of about $4.7 million. We received those funds late last year and have been spent some time establishing priorities for the expenditure of those funds, as well as establishing priorities for the expenditure of the combined fee revenue. of the combined fee revenue financing funds of about $2.5 million that we received from refinancing previously issued bonds. And the second part of this is to consider action on allocation of funds for the projects funded by the $68 million bond project. We have learned things since we've begun working with architects and with the campus groups. And so that has caused us to take a look at how we might expend those funds. The three areas that we have for funding needs include property acquisition, capital repairs and renovations, as well as the construction with the bond proceeds. Just as a reminder, we have funds in the '07 budget for funding property, approximately $1 million, but we are also aggressively seeking to add property around the campus for parking and other needs. And so some of the maintenance notes and revenue notes, we will be allocating money for that property funding. The second thing in the budget is we also had $1.6 million for capital repairs and renovations. Again, much needed repairs on campus, but we also had identified needs above that that we needed to fund and maintenance notes can fund part of that capital need. With respect to the bond projects, if you'll recall, the original funding levels are in the original column on the left-hand side. After we established that, we came to the board with the recreational, with the Wellness Center, the REC. And in order to match the student contribution, we reallocated some of the bond funding for the REC to bring that funding level from bond proceeds to $12.5 million. And that additional $5 million, approximately $4.5 million, came from two places. It came from funding commitment by the university funds, not Southmost Funds, and funds from the TSC fund balance. But some things have happened in between that time and now. One of those things is that we've had maintenance notes of $4.7 million become available, the refinancing of the revenue bonds of $2.5 million become available. We've also learned of possibilities for donors and partnerships for additional funding, all of which we're working on as we move through these projects. We've also learned more about the program requirements for the bond projects as we've spoken with the campus advisory committees. We've learned of the needs for all of the programs, the classrooms, the REC Center, the music facility, the ITech Center, the library, all of those we've learned more about. And the final thing that's happened since we visited this the last time is that we have received tuition revenue bond funding from the state of Texas of $33.8 million for a science and technology complex.
Yes!
This is, all of these.
Wayne, let me stop you and ask you a question
Yes, sir.
About that 38, 33.8. We just had a discussion about the fact that we have a shortage of space or whatever for more nursing students. How will, since this is for science and technology, how will this 33.8, or is there anything in the 33.8 that could help us
Yes, sir.
With that discussion we just had?
Yes, sir, there is in our planning. And you'll be hearing more about this as we move through the programming, which we've just, Ms. Mendez has just started programming the 33.8 million. But initially and on a very global level, what we are talking about is making available additional space in the existing, in some of our existing facilities in the Life Health Sciences Building by relocating some of the research areas that are there into the science and technology building and expanding our nursing program space into the Life and Health Sciences Building. And in addition, in that science and technology complex, we're looking at the Math Science Academy and others. So there will be room for expansion of nursing as well as our research capability in biology and some of the other programs that we don't have space for now, Math Science Academy and additional general purpose classrooms as well. So there's lots of room in that. In addition, that 33.8 million is helping us fund infrastructure, heating and cooling capacity for the entire campus and create redundancies in that way. So we're using it in many ways.
Thank you.
Just a reminder about, there are some limitations, so you'll see that we're spending this money in different ways. Maintenance notes can only be spent for repairs and renovations. We can't use those maintenance notes monies for buying property or for building new buildings. The revenue financing funds, we can spend in much more flexible ways. So you'll see we've divided up our expenditures in ways that are appropriate to the kinds of restrictions we have on the funds. This is how we propose to the board to allocate the $2.5 million that were a result of the refinancing of the combined fee revenue bonds. First, we have a property acquisition, money set aside for opportunities that may exist or currently exist for property acquisition. We also have set aside funds in addition to what's in the budget of $1 million. We're setting aside another $500,000 for acquisition of condominiums and lots along Jackson Street as we've been doing in the past, which will give us a total of about $1,505,000 for property acquisition. We are also setting aside $740,000 for contribution to the bond activities at the ITech campus. And I'll be talking a little bit more about that line item in just a minute. But that's a number to remember, $740,000. We also are setting aside approximately $750,000 for a soccer field. As we develop the REC Center, as you know, and Mr. Campionano's been an active participant in those activities, there developed a need, as we learned more about the needs for the REC Center, a need not only for a field for students to have intramural zone, for fields for kinesiology to have their classes on, but now that we're developing a more mature athletics program, including soccer team, there were just too much need for one field to accommodate. And so as we identify that need and as we begin to identify property that we might be able to build a soccer field on, we've set aside enough money to construct a soccer field that would be appropriate for the kinds of activities that we're going to have with a mature athletics program. And finally, contingency of approximately $121,000 in order to account for budgeting fluctuations that might occur with any of these projects. So that's how we propose to allocate the revenue bond refinancing. The next section that we have is, are the maintenance notes, which can only be used for renovations and improvements. As you recall, I mentioned we had about $1 million set aside, $1,006,000 certified for capital, for repairs and renovations. We also had deferred maintenance that the physical plant and others had helped us identify that we didn't fund in the '07 budget of about $650,000. We want to address those items, repairs, and there are lots of them with that $651,000. The next item is the commissary renovation. That's the former art building. We've provided new areas for art to, for instruction for art. We have a new focus in our institutional advancement, especially with scholarships this year. We're bringing all of institutional advancement under one roof in the art building in the center of campus. We're meeting with Ruth Ann Ragland in a couple of weeks with her group to begin to program that. We're excited about that, use of that facility. We're also continuing to stabilize the comp res and hope that we begin to find some grant money for doing more with that as we move into the future. Finally, we have three other areas. The Noitra House, and I'll be showing you some pictures of that in the construction report. We are finishing the exterior of that house. Larry's done a wonderful job with physical plant and others. And we want to move to the inside and some landscaping and try to finish off that facility so that we can begin to take advantage of it and use it. Also, we are providing some upgrades for the Mary Rose Cardenas Facility. That facility's not had anything done to it for, well, it's 19 years old and this is the first time we've done anything to it. We're making some upgrades in the lobbies and other areas, but also from the, sort of the UTB side of the house. We've got $125,000 and we're working with Ethelcon 2 to provide instructional classroom upgrades with computer technology similar to what we have in our new classrooms. So we're doing both things there, instructional upgrades and also a facelift on the interior with that funding. A small amount, but it'll make a significant difference, I think. And again, ITech, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute, providing $3.3 million in funding for ITech so that we can deliver the programs there that we need. And finally, again, a small contingency to bring us to the $4.7 million. And now to the bond projects and where we are today with the bond projects. As I mentioned, we've learned a lot about what the needs are in these different facilities. And right off the bat, I think you can see that music education needs have grown and they have grown substantially. But what we discovered as we moved through the programming initially, to accommodate just the instructional needs only that faculty and staff identified, brought us to $13 million in our first run-through. And that was after cutting out everything we could possibly cut out. That brought us to $13 million. In addition to that, as we looked at expanded opportunities for the use of that facility for opera, for theatrical performances and for community activities, to add those functional needs to that facility, brought us another $500, $5 million in need, bringing us to $18 million. What we have done is to try to accommodate that growth in program need and instructional need and cover the increased costs is to move $5 million out of the biomedical research area. Now, that isn't, doesn't mean we're losing the biomedical research. As we use the $33.8 million, we are going to accomplish the functions that we were going to accomplish with the $5 million in the biomedical research. We're going to do that in the Science and Technology Center. So that program doesn't lose, in fact, it really gains. We will be gaining in the Biomedical Research Center and moving $5 million up to help cover the programmatic needs for the Fine Arts Music Education Center. And then we also are funding part of that need, $5 million, from the ITech Center. And then we're moving, as I showed you in the maintenance notes and other areas, moving funds from maintenance notes and fund balance and the revenue bond proceeds into ITech to bring it back close to the $17 million that we had planned originally. We are further along in all of the other programs than we are in ITech. We feel that we'll be able to raise money for, to be able to bring ITech back to $17 million as we move through programming and construction and development in the next year, 18 months. So that's our proposal for how to accomplish all of the needs that we have identified for all the programs. For the REC Center, we're well within our budget. Remember, it's a $25 million project, not just $12 million. Students are contributing money. Classroom projects well underway in programming and so is the library remodeling, the new library, early childhood center and the biomedical technical. All of those we think are within our budget parameters. So that is our recommended proposal for the bond projects. I have one other slide I'd like to show you. It's a little hard to read, but it gives you a picture of all of the projects that we're doing and I'd like to share some of that with you as well. We have a total project activity of $144 million. Included in that, that I haven't mentioned, is the student housing at $17 million. Again, the $33 million in the Science and Technology Building. We're doing about $2.5 million in infrastructure upgrades, heating, cooling plants, and none of this includes also parking that we have planned for the future. I'll be glad to answer any questions and we would need a motion to adopt these allocations if the board so chooses.
Any discussions? Thank you, Dr. Moore.
I do. I mean, and I'm just, I did have an opportunity to meet with the staff and go over this. And the only comment I'll make is the same comment I've made before and it's, you know, I understand what we're doing and, you know, I think it's important to show that here's what we went to the voters with for the $68 million and how we're going to use it. I think it's important to assure that even though we're reducing the biomedical for $5 million, that we're not going to do it. But I do have, I don't want to see us reduce the ITech allocation. One is that we haven't even finished programming and anyways, we know we're already cutting the budget. I think that, you know, ITech is just, like all of these projects, just as critical. You know, we know we're not going to have enough money for ITech. When we started doing ITech, we were talking about a lot more money that we could even do with $17 million and we haven't even made any commitments on what we're going to do and we're already cutting the budget. I'd like to see us, if there are funding opportunities, shift those or other funding opportunities, whether they're sponsorships or whatever, I think they need to be shifted to the Music Education Center. And I believe that the ITech budget needs to say where it's at. And so, you know, I haven't, while I commend Dr. Moore and the staff for looking at ways to attempt to restore the ITech budget, and I think we did do that. I think initially, the recommendation didn't look, but it's still, in my mind, gets us away. We're still about a million dollars short of that $17 million and I really don't want to see us cut it. So that's kind of my comments on that and I'll decide whether I'll support the entire plan or not based on, you know, what we're going to do with ITech.
My understanding is, is that at some point, we are going to get back up to that $17 million. We will meet it. So I don't look at it as we're cutting anything. It's just right now, we're shifting some money to another project, but that eventually that money will get, will be made up and so we're not going to cut ITech out of a million dollars. At least, that's my understanding. Right now, on this projection that we have, it shows it being cut a million. And I think in the end, it's not going to be cut a million. There are those of us that feel that, there were a lot of other areas that got cheated as well because, and I thought, there are those of us that feel that ITech got too much. And so I don't feel the same way. And I think, I've received assurances from, I think from the administration and from the staff that ultimately that funding will be restored because I am concerned that we did tell the voters that this is what we're going to do. And I think ultimately, we're going to do it. So I think we will be keeping our word.
And not only do I feel that it's going to be restored, but if you look at all of the projects that are the subject of the bond, each and every one, well, not each and every one of them, but most of them had a significantly higher budget than what was planned for the bond project itself. Starting with the REC Center, I mean, that's a $26 million project and only $8 million is being used out of the bond money. Music education, I know originally that was only an $8 million project, but because of things that happened such as the tuition revenue bond, we've been able to expand the budget for that and provide additional uses for that particular project. And we've had to make sacrifices for, in some of the other projects. And I feel that as far as, I mean, when looking at this proposal here, I mean, clearly it's being reduced by close to a million dollars. But in the long run, in the plans that I've seen for ITech, we're, I mean, our dream is a $60 million project. And not that that's something that may happen in the next four years. There's no question that in the next four years, I feel that we're going to have to spend more than $17 million, which was the original estimation that we had set out for ITech. Initially, and I know Mr. Campionano referred to the work that staff put into this, they had proposed taking $5 million out of ITech. And certainly that, my first reaction was, well, wait a minute, we don't even know where we're going or what we're going to do yet. What does $5 million take out of this? And I know they did a lot of homework and really researched different ways to supplement the ITech budget and they got back over $4 million. And being the chair of Be Back for ITech, I mean, I did have to advocate for and protect my turf there. my turf there. But at the same time, I know that the bigger picture is all of the projects that we have going on. And I was most impressed by the fact that we took $68 million, and if you look at the sheet that we could barely read, somehow, we are now building $144 million worth of infrastructure into this institution. And I was real proud of that. And so, when I put it into perspective, the million dollars out of the ITech budget was something I felt we were going to make up. And I'm hoping that with some of the sponsorships that were being discussed, I've heard a potential of $3 to $5 million in sponsorships. I would hope that the first thing that we do, if those sponsorships come through, is reinvest that into the ITech budget. And maybe since the ITech budget has made the sacrifice at this early stage, let's reward it by kicking in an extra, well, whatever we can if that sponsorship comes through, because that is extra money. Those are my comments.
And I think that, you know, I mean, I would tell you, two years ago or a year ago, I would have been opposed to maybe shifting so much to the music education. But I, you know, after I saw what we could have here, and this is something I think that it's probably going to be, you know, the last fine arts project of this magnitude, at least in Cameron County, that we're going to see in a long time. And it's going to be, I think, the centerpiece of our campus, and it's going to bring, also, we talked about bringing people onto our campus every chance we get, because the more we do that, the better we market this university. And so, I think that that particular fine arts center is going to be great at accomplishing that. And so, that's why I was moved to find more ways to find more money. And I think, you know, when it's all said and done, we're going to be real glad we did it.
I agree. I think this is a great place to, the Music Education Building, to spend this extra $10 million. My project was the biomedical research, but of course, we came up with that $33 million from TRBs, and it took many special sessions to get that, but we're real pleased to have that. So, that was easy to give that. This is going to be a community project. This is going to be a community building everyone can use. It is going to be a beautiful building. And it's going to be very useful building, something that, and if we don't build it to the max now, we won't have another opportunity. So, I truly believe that they've worked hard. I think we'll find, I think we'll be able to replace that $1 million. Maybe not easy, but I, easy because we haven't decided truly what we're going to be doing with ITech yet. So, I'd like to make that motion.
May I have a motion then to approve the allocation of maintenance tax notes, combined fee revenue bonds, and bond proceeds? Hasn't that been made? It's Brie Love, and second by Mr. Oliva.
One last comment, if I may.
Sure.
I'll be happy to support giving ITech more money when that opportunity presents itself, but I don't see it there right now. So, and I think all of these projects, in some form or fashion, serve the community. They're all community projects. ITech is just as much of a cornerstone of what potentially could be a major factor in fueling the economic vitality of this community. So, I mean, I understand that there are value to the community. I just felt that, you know, like you said, we haven't even decided what we're going to do with it, and we're already cutting it. So, anyway, that'll conclude my comments.
I'd like to just add two notes, if I might, to remind us that initially, we had decided, this board had decided to plan ITech to spend all of that $17 minus $3 million because, and to hold that back in reserve to use as leveraging perhaps additional money. And so, in one sense, the plan that we have for ITech Phase One was going to be for initially less than $17 million and holding the three in reserve. But the second item is that none of us casually want to deplete one budget in favor of another. And so, this has not been a casual decision. It has been one deliberated on by many, many folks at the table, inclusive of making visits by a couple of board members with us to Houston to look at what might be the result. The program that we're proposing would, remember, include additional instructional space, an additional rehearsal hall. It is the case today, for starters, it is the case today that the high schools in our community have better facilities for music than this university does. And it is very difficult to recruit students to our music program when they have better facilities where they've been than where they're going to. And so, everything we're designing in the instructional space for this new music education building is with the thought of growing the music program to accommodate a huge need in our community. We have music students here who have never been able to continue on to higher education because we did not have a program. We now have a bachelor's degree in music. We need to now start toward that master's degree. Today, every UIL activity that is in music must go to Pan American University for competition because between here and Pan Am, there is not space large enough to host that competition. So, we are designing this facility with that notion of having room enough, both on the stage and in the rehearsal halls, to accommodate up to 120-member bands, not because we have them, but because the high schools have them, and that's our pool. The final item has to do with the theater. The theater that we are looking at designing, and one of the reasons it has increased to this amount, is expanded on what the program required. The program wanted about a 600-seat theater. We've now expanded it, based on the visits and the studies that we've made, to about 800 seats. The quality of this theater will be such that it will not only entice as a recruitment of our students, it will entice an expansion of the kind of faculty that we're able to recruit. It'll explode the opportunities for students as they think not only about music, but about dance, about opera and drama. And we've never been able to offer those programs here. So, one of the reasons we decided to take this plunge and to ask for this commitment was because while we have an opportunity to build and to focus on the fine arts, and we've never done that, they've been from one old building to another old building, from the music hall to Eidman. A retrofitted science building is where our music department currently is. And our art department now is in a retrofitted vocational technical building. So, just like we want to pay a focus and attention to health sciences, sciences and biomedical research, physics, and athletics, here's a department and a group that, fine arts, performing arts, that has already blossomed in spite of not having facilities. And finally, we've pledged, really, one final note. We've pledged to find donors. If we're going to be able to find a donor in any of these programs, this is the one that might attract and has the greatest potential for doing that. This is a wonderful naming opportunity. We're hoping that some wonderful donor out in the community will want to see their name on this magnificent theater. And so, we pledge to you to use all of the efforts that we can serve you with to make sure that we bring that extra money in. And I'm looking at Dr. Ragland and everyone else here, because it'll take everybody to pull this in. And frankly, I'm very confident. We were able to raise $1 million in 1985 without experience, when we had to, in 18 months. Ruth Ann, I think we can do at least the same now. And as a matter of fact, I'm very confident. So, I just wanted that, Mr. Campitano, to be on the table to remind us it's an important program. I know you know that. I know you value it as much as we do. And we pledge to you to try and recoup that as soon as possible.
And, you know, I don't want people to get the impression that I'm voting against music or anything like that, because I wholeheartedly support the substantial increase in the budget. But it's for the reason that you just stated that I would think that, you know, if you can raise that money, you have the best opportunity to raise it in music and not cut it from ITech. But that's fine.
And I respond to that, and the problem is that it's simply a time factor with the architects. If we, right now, they're ready now to get into schematic design, and they need a total construction amount. And so, if we delay them, then that'll delay the entire project. So, that is, it's a point well made. We have a little bit more time in ITech, and that's why we went to ITech. It's also the largest budget.
Like I said, I look forward to the opportunity to come back and allocate more money to ITech in the future.
And we join you in that.
Motion's been made by Ms. Brie Love, and second by Mr. Oliva. Any further discussion, then let's vote on this. Is this all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll vote nay.
Campitano? Motion carries.
The other thing, too, just real quickly, I was noticing the list of all the projects, and I noticed one on here I wasn't familiar with, but it's $17 million for student housing. I hope we get something on that at some point.
The proposal in student housing is where we would use the payment of rent to retire that debt. So, we would not be able to incur that debt unless the market study that we had chose that. And remember, we did that market study already, and the market study said, bill them, and they will come. And so, that's the money that would be pledged against that.
Okay. Thank you.
We move on to item number seven. It's the change order number one for the contract with Jamel Construction for the pedestrian bridge. Dr. Moore will report on that.
Mr. Chairman, this change order is in the amount of $56,310.56. The pedestrian bridge that goes from, that we are beginning construction on from the housing to the area just next to Mary Oaks Garden in South, when this construction contract was approved, we had not finalized the design of that bridge. In the final design, we added approximately 40 linear feet to the bridge and some other wideouts on the bridge and some other things. And so, we're asking for a change order. This change order is not a result of an increase in price, it's a result in the change in our scope of the project.
So, how much is the whole project cost?
The whole project, the initial contract was $525,000. This adds $56,000 to it.
You need to, what, and, you need to, it's a little low.
$576,000, round numbers.
I have a motion to approve a change order.
And other stuff.
So, we move on to Mr. Oliva, second by Ms. Brie Love. Any further discussion on this item? None, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries. Item number eight is the tax rate for the, oh, six, Advilorum tax rate for the district. Dr. Moore?
Yes, sir. This is the third and final step of the required of the board to set the Advilorum tax rate for the coming year. As you may recall, the first step was to publish notice of the effective and rollback rates in the newspapers and other places. The next step was to hold two public hearings, which were conducted on August 28th and August 31st. The final step is to adopt the rates which are listed on the resolutions included in your binders. I will now read those resolutions. Whereas the certified tax rolls for the year 2006 have been received for the Texas Southmost College District, and whereas it is necessary to set a tax rate for the year beginning September 1st, 2006, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Texas Southmost College District that there will be levied for the year 2006 on all property owned within the limits of the Texas Southmost College District as of the first day of September 2006, except so much thereof as may be exempt by the Constitution of the United States and the laws of this state, the following tax. An Advilorum tax assessment for the tax year beginning on September 1st, 2006 at 0.109955 cents per $100 valuation at an assessment rate of 100% for the maintenance and operation of the Texas Southmost College District. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a home of $100,000 by approximately 79 cents. It will be adopted this day, 14th day of September 2006. The second resolution is for the debt rate service. And whereas the certified tax rolls for the year 2006 have been received for the Texas Southmost College District, and whereas it is necessary to set a tax rate for the year beginning September 1st, 2006, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Texas Southmost College District that there will be levied for the year 2006 on all property owned within the limits of the Texas Southmost College District as of the first day of September 2006, except so much thereof as may be exempt by the Constitution of the United States and the laws of this state, the following tax. An Advilorum tax assessment for the year, for the tax year beginning on September 1st, 2006 at 0.14585 per $100 valuation for the 1987 tax debt. .009447 cents per $100 valuation for the 2005 tax debt. .023581 per $100 valuation for the 2006 tax debt. And .003521 per $100 valuation for the maintenance tax notes. The resolution states this would be adopted the 14th day of September 2006. Mr. Chairman, the form of the motion is in your packet, and that form is required by state law. And so, we would ask for that motion to be made.
I move that the property taxes be increased. My question is, is can we just adopt the numbers that you just read out? Do I have to read them again?
You have to read them, Mr. Oliva.
I wouldn't think so, but if you say so, I will. And keep in mind that I couldn't pass college algebra, so, here we go. I move that property taxes be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .109955 for maintenance and operations, a debt rate of .014585 for the 1987 tax bonds, a debt rate of 009447 for the 2005 tax bonds, a debt rate of 023581 for the 2006 tax bonds, and a debt rate of 003521 for the maintenance tax notes, tax notes per $100 valuation. And don't ask me to repeat it.
So, motion's been made by Mr. Oliva, second by Ms. Brie Love. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries.
Just so everybody knows, when you add up all those numbers, that means the tax rate for the current fiscal year is 16.1, which is a reduction of the tax rate for the 2005 year of 16.27 cents. So, it is somewhat less than what we had the prior year.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. We now go to item number nine, which is the second reading of the policy 4C1, which deals with sick leave. Dr. Moore?
This is second reading, Mr. Chairman. And this sick leave policy brings the Texas Southmost College sick leave policy in concordance with the UTB and state policy, which the philosophy of this board has been for its TSC employees. And we need a motion to adopt, sir.
May I have a motion to approve the amendment to the policy?
I move.
This is, Zebra Man has moved, and this is Brie Love has second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries.
It also provides that whenever there is a change in the state policy, that this thing would automatically mirror that without having to amend it every time there's a change, so.
We move on now to item number 10, organization of the board. As you are aware, that policy requires that after every election, that the office of the Board of Trustees of the Texas Southmost College District be open for new positions, for nominations for each position. And so, at this time, I'm going to, we have to consider the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Secretary of the Board. And at this time, I'd open the floor for nominations for each position.
Mr. Chair, I would move to nominate the same group of officers, since they did such a fine job from 2004 to 2006. Chair is our great leader, Mr. Chester Gonzalez, Vice Chair- Vice chair is his great second-in-command, Rosemary Brelo, and secretary is, he has paid such close attention to detail, Mr. Campirano.
Apparently not great, though.
Thank you, Mr. Oliveira, for those kind of words. Motion has been made by Mr. Oliveira, second by Mrs. Zimmerman. Any other recommendations from the floor?
No.
Then we'll vote on that. All in favor for the slate that's been proposed by Mr. Oliveira?
Some of, or second or vote? No, you've already had a first and a second. Right, aye.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries.
I thought about nominating Roberto because he wasn't here, just to see what he said.
Let me just thank the board for their confidence in my leadership. And it's, it's very easy to lead a team of professionals that we are when we have, board members are very committed to the mission of this institution and that of higher education. And, and so I thank you for your vote of confidence, and, and we have much work to do. And Dr. Garcia, again, I thank you for your leadership. And I think that we're going to have a lot of changes on this campus the next coming year, plus the next couple of years, that will just create this institution, both academically and infrastructural-wise, the best campus on the state of Texas. Thank you very much.
Item 11 is the committees of the board, and those are the appointment of trustees to partnership committees. We, on that one, I, it's my duty as, as board chair to name board members appointed to each committee, and I've elected to just to maintain the same, board members to the same positions as we had last year. And I'll go ahead and read those, being to the academic affairs partnership committee, Mrs. Rosemary Brelo and Mr. Ramadi, who's possible, will be in that committee. As to the business affairs partnership committee for the year 2006 and 2008, I will be Mr. Campirano, and Mr. David Oliveira will be in that committee. The institutional effectiveness partnership committee for year '06 and '08 will be, continue to be Rosemary Brelo and Ms. Dolly Zimmerman. For student affairs partnership committee for '06, '08, board members will continue to be Dolly Zimmerman as chair, co-chair, and Dr. Roberto Robles as board member. And the partnership advisory committee will continue to be the board chair, myself, the vice chair, Ms. Brelo, and board member Roberto Robles to the same committee, so.
If you should ever decide to appoint an athletic committee, I will volunteer.
I'll be your assistant.
We'll get the committee going. Thank you, Mr. Oliveira, for volunteering. Item 12 is the third quarter financial and investment report. Ms. Nancy Soldana?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Garcia, members of the board. Financial statements for the third quarter and the investment report have been included in your binders, therefore being provided for informational purposes and do not require any action. These statements are for fiscal year '05, '06, and they are for the operations from March '06 through May. The total interest earned for the third quarter totaled $507,000. The interest is being generated through the district's various checking accounts and savings accounts with Lone Star National Bank, and they're earning 3.15 percent and 3.40 percent interest rate, respectively. We also have invested our first bond issuance of $19.5 million with JP Morgan Chase, and that's earning 3.745 percent. And our wellness recreation bond issuance is earning 4.78 percent with Texas State Bank.
What are the terms of those bonds on the, on the, for the rec and for the other? I mean, what are you doing? Are they staggered over time?
They mature, well, they mature 2009. So we're trying to, as soon as-
So we did fix them for that period?
Yes, sir.
We won't need to draw them between now and 2009?
We're drawing two times per month, as needed.
Any other questions from this Soldana?
Thank you very much, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is the bond project report. Ms. Dona Comendes, there you are.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board, and President Garcia. I am pleased to report that on August 22nd, we had the first groundbreaking of the bond projects, the groundbreaking for the rec center. We had excellent participation from the members of the board trustees, the university community, community, and the community at large. Here's a snapshot of the event.
For a, for a long, long time, since the wrecking crew was created and they went and toured several campuses, this has been something that had been a dream in the works, a vision in the works. And, and today we're one step closer to that dream. You know, students came together two years ago and voted on, on this facility, and, and they made that dream possible. They made that vision come true.
One of the principles that we have formed our university around is the notion of shared governance. And you heard a little bit about that today. Abraham mentioned, Mike knows that, Edward knows that, everyone who's been a student leader here knows it, or a faculty member here, or a member of the staff, or involved as a member of the community. It's real. Sharing governance here are not just two kind of rhetorical terms that we throw out and put in our mission. It is a real sense of the more people that you bring to the table, the more smart people you bring to the table, the better the product at the end of the day. And that's really what has driven so much of our, of our work, and, and resulted in good products along the way. Well, the same style was used in the formation of committees to do the work of, of these bond issues, beginning with this particular rec building. As Abraham mentioned, this is very unique. We took some money that was raised by the students, and then we combined it with some money that was raised by the bond issue. And so it took groups together, sitting down, sharing their money, and trying to decide how to share their interests, and then share the, the product at the end of it to come up what's going to be a marvelous, marvelous project.
But my biggest moment here on campus was leading the effort to pass a student referendum to build a rec center. We weren't just about building a building. It was about beginning, it wasn't just about building a building, it was the beginning of history in the making, when students would go to the polls and decide for themselves how to build their university. It was at that point in time that I knew that we would do something historic, not just for the current students, but for future generations. We knew that we were going to grow this university at a time when the state could not help us. This 150,000 square foot state-of-the-art facility is going to set the pace for the rest of the community to follow, and its success rests on the shoulders of all of us.
We immediately proceeded on the work on the site, and we continue all the work on the building pad. Over the coming weeks, we will continue to fill and compact the soil to prepare for pier drilling. The building pad work is scheduled to continue through the month of October. On the other projects, as we like to accomplish on schematic design, we will be scheduling board bond advisory committees to review the designs. Staff will be calling you shortly to confirm attendance to those meetings. We are very excited about the progress so far and look forward with sharing with you all of those plans and the committees of the board. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez, very much for your report. Okay, now we go to Dr. Moore's construction report.
Yes, sir. I'm pleased to report on several items. First, the Craig House that we're working on, and I think you'll see, if you saw it before, there's been substantial change, all new windows, all new roofing, new fascia around the, the exterior. The interior, some wood upgrades have been done, and you can see this house is, look at all that gracing. I was amazed when I went in there, just compared to today's construction, residential construction. It's going to be a wonderful facility. This is the balcony, it doesn't have the rail on it. Our guy didn't fall off, Johnny didn't fall off today. And it's going to be, it's just going to be a great addition to, to the facility group we have. The Truon Sculpture Garden is underway. We had a little delay with rain and some other projects that we needed to get finished on campus. Bricks, pravers will be installed, and landscaping will be installed. That's just across from the, what you're going to see here is what's not there. The storage shed is gone. You remember there was a metal building down on that corner, Ringo, in University Boulevard? It is gone, and we left the, the little brick wall, but this site looks so much better now without that, that ugly metal building. We also are beginning to use our Port Mansfield facility. Elizabeth Heiss is going up, we put signs on it. Construction guys were up there, and I told them, take pictures while we're there, and they did, got signed, and we've done some painting. We've painted the interior, we've put in new, the kitchen's been upgraded with new facilities. Elizabeth called today, she's trying to figure out how to pay for getting her students up there and some vans. I told her to call Dr. Martine, and, and she did. And some new beds. I want to mention one other thing. The award we won tonight for the Education Business Complex, part of that has to do with our physical plant. Those guys did a wonderful job, and last night, Tuesday night, we had the exceptional merit awards. And Jose Ruiz has taken over as temporary ground supervisor, and he's also responsible for the grounds at the Education Business Complex, and he received exceptional merit Tuesday night. And I think some of the, that award goes to Jose Ruiz and our grounds crew and our physical plant for the fine job they do maintaining this campus. It's a big campus, it's a big job, and they do a great job. I just thought I'd say that. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Moore.
One, if I may, just ask a question, I guess probably you, Dr. Garcia. The Port Mansfield reminded me of the Willacy County property, the Walmart property that we accepted. What have we done with that, and is there anything going on with that? Maybe at the next meeting, or it's in the construction report or whatever?
We are visually preparing that facility for use, and what I'll do is get Jim Holt to brief us next time, if you don't mind, and, because it's, it is, it's very exciting what's going on there, and it deserves more time than, than a brief answer, but thank you for asking.
That community really needs some kind of shot in the arm.
Yeah. We'll, we'll bring you that report. Thank you for asking.
Okay.
It's running, right?
Mr. Chairman, after his voice. I, I'd just like to say, Mr. Dr. Moore brought up a, a subject, and I just, want to just say a couple of things on. Monday and Tuesday night, I attended the exceptional merit recognition ceremonies, where 33 of your faculty members and 62 of your staff members were recognized by their achievements in service. I just want you to know that your, that your faculty is absolutely amazing. From Black Hall research, papers presented in Italy and China, mathematics, science, biology, everything, I mean, just to mention a few. The, and the staff, also, then, they're unbelievable. We heard story after story of dedicated and selfless service to the students, to the faculty, and to this community. And I am, I was so proud to be there, so honored to, to be, just be present with both of those ceremonies. They were just wonderful. And, and I know you are too. Just wanted to take that opportunity to say how proud I was.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Brelo. Dr. Garcia?
Yes, thank you. I have, I have a very short items. One is that our distinguished lecture series is, of course, on again, this time, October the 16th, and the next day for the student lecture, October the 17th. The author that is, the distinguished lecturer that's coming is David McCullough. David McCullough is the author of 1776, and a winner, I believe, of the Pulitzer Prize for Literature. We are, we are very, very honored to have him. So if you haven't read it, read it before, October the 16th.
And A Path Between Two Seas, where he talks about Dr. William Gorgas and all the research that he did on campus. So that is my favorite book.
Thank you. And we are, we're very anxious to, to, to host Mr. McCullough. Also, as a pledge toward more activity in development, Dr. Ruth Ann Ragland has been working very, very hard on some donations, and I'd like to mention some that we have received just in the last, since the last few months, because if you see these people in the community, you need to be able to recognize them and thank them on our behalf. J.E. Dunn Construction Company, J.E. Dunn with Terry Ray are the construction company that are, that are responsible for the building of our recreation center, have given us $10,000. A X and Florida Esther Benavides have given us $10,000 as well, and these are endowment contributions. And, and in both cases, we believe that they're going to grow from, from what this amount is. As you know, we are very fortunate and honored to have a member of our faculty as their son, Dr. Jude Benavides in Environmental Sciences. Margarita de Luna Inojosa, a $20,000 endowment, endowment. Margarita Inojosa was a long-term employee of ours, and worked, worked in financial aid registrar's office for many, many years. Actually, Veterans Affairs, I'm sorry, I'm getting into that. Veterans Affairs, and every veteran that ever went through Texas Southmost College met Margarita, and she would work so hard to get them funding and get them connected. And, and her family has given us $20,000 for an endowment in her honor. Sierra Title Company has given us an endowment start of $25,000. We're very, very pleased with, with that contribution. We, you know that Dr. Milo Kearney has just retired and was named Professor Emeritus, and in his honor, we received a $20,000 endowment. And we received now another one for international students, and, and that number continues to grow every year. I believe this year, I heard the other night at the exceptional merit dinner, that it had grown to, was it 400 international students that we have now? And we have now an endowment for $27,000. I would like to congratulate. Go ahead. Oh, please.
One of our communications professors.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, thank you. The most recent one is from Breeden McCumber. And Breeden McCumber have given us what they're calling an excellent scholarship for communication majors with a mass communication emphasis for $10,000. And that was the direct result of a contact by a member of our faculty, Dr. Lewis Falk, who's worked with the Institutional Development Office to make this happen. All told, we're at about 122,000 in new endowments. Hats off. An important performance is going to occur, and that's going to be at South Padre Island, and it is a fundraising concert, and it is by the UTB TSC Master Corral. As you might recall, this group was invited to Ireland to play at the famed St. Patrick's Cathedral on St. Patrick's Day, 2007. But we have no money to send all of them to Dublin, Ireland. And so they are going to have this fundraising concert. It is being sponsored by the El Paseo Arts Foundation in the South Padre Laguna Madre area. It is going to be at the Convention Center on South Padre Island. It is Sunday, October the 8th, at 4:00 p.m., and we'd like all of you to attend or to buy some tickets and invite others to attend, and some of our foundation board members that live on the island are going to host a dinner or a reception of, for, for folks in, in advance of that. And that, that is Vicky Moore and-
Dennis Frankie.
And Dennis Frankie, and Scott Friedman, the three members, and the Medios Villarreal. So we are very thankful that, that they are participating in this concert, both the El Paseo Arts Foundation and our, very active participation by our development board members. Our final announcement is one we make with great, with great sadness, and that is the death of our former governor, Ann Richards. We have lost a very good friend with her death. She, as you know, was our former governor, but it was Ann Richards who led, along with Bob Bullock, our lieutenant governor, with completely different style, who led the South Texas Border Initiative. And it was that initiative that for- And it was that initiative that for one decade, the decade of the 90s, in fact, established UT Brownsville and built UT Brownsville and moved it fast forward. South Texas Border Initiative brought us money for buildings, but in addition, it said, "What programs do you need? And what do you need to start the program?" It gave us money for faculty, it gave us money for equipment and for library. That has never happened again, and it has never happened before. And it was all as a result of the leadership of the state of Texas, recognizing at that time what the Malder suit had very eloquently and articulately stated in court, and that was that for too long, South Texas and the border had been deprived of the advantages of higher education, and it was time to change it. While that battle was in, in appeal, because it had been won at the district level, the state is starting to take action, and it was led by our governor. And so, she was a very, very good friend. She came on campus to sign the document that established UT Brownsville, that did not have to happen. Usually, it's an unceremonial kind of signing that governors do in their office, or they invite you to be there for the signing. But she wanted to come to our campus. So, we have a very short video that we thought we would play for you tonight to remind us of her impact.
I came because what is transpiring here is the answer to a real prayer of my own, and it gives me tremendous, tremendous pleasure to be the governor of the state of Texas, and to be able to say that I played a part in making this border the front door to the United States, and not the back door as it's been treated for so long. Thank you, thank you very much.
That completes my report.
Dr. Garcia, I mean, you, I think you're absolutely right. We lost, Texas lost a great leader, and we lost a great friend here in South Texas. And I'm reminded of something Ron Kirk, the former mayor of Dallas, said about her one time, and that she not only opened doors, she burned them down, kicked them down, and opened them up for women and people of color. We didn't need to look no farther than our own hometown to see, you know, she appointed so many people. She made Nacho Garza chairman of the Texas Parks and Wildlife, one of the most prestigious appointments you can get. But more than that, she loved this university. She was my fishing buddy, and every time, every time we fish, she always wanted to come to campus, and she was always, she said, "How's Juliette Garcia and the university doing?" And she loved this place, and she had a vision, I think, for higher ed that was just light years ahead of any governor we've had, and I'm sorry to say, any governor we've had since then. And so, she will be so greatly missed, I know, by all of us and by this community.
And I'm sorry, I never had a chance to meet her person-to-person, and I'm really very sorry I didn't get a chance to meet Governor Richards. But I know, as David had said, she entered politics to help others, and she said especially to help women and minorities who are often ignored by the Texas male-dominated establishment. What a legacy for us all to try to follow. She always realized the importance of education and gave moral lip service, which seems to be what we're getting from many of our politicians today. So, please, her leadership and dedication are qualities which we should all aspire.
And I think it would be, it would be hopeless to look for some way to recognize her on this campus and maybe invite her family, and I, you know, I'm certainly going to be talking to folks on this campus to think, "What can we do to honor her memory and her legacy?" And she meant so much to us, we can't, we can't miss that opportunity.
Thank you very much. Dr. Garcia? Thank you, Garcia. So, proposed meetings for the board are October 26th, November 30th, and December 21st. If we don't have any more announcements, then I'll ask a motion to adjourn. Motion carries. Thank you.